Okay.
Everybody speak once on the budget and then just move.
Mm-hmm. It's up to me.
Anita, are we ready? Okay, will you just check for us, or Devon? Yeah, sorry. Okay, hold on, I'm just getting to my... Okay. Here we are. The June 2022 interim special meeting of the Board of Education is called to order. Ms. Bowie, will you please call the roll?
Good afternoon. Stephanie Craybill.
Here.
Stephanie Walker.
Here.
Stephanie Adams.
Here.
Nelson Bullier.
Here.
Judy Justice.
Here.
He McManus.
Present.
And Pete Wilderboy.
Present.
So, welcome again to the New Hanover County Board of Education's June interim special meeting. Thank you all for joining us, this in-person or a remote viewing audience. We value and appreciate your interest, your participation, and your advocacy on behalf of the New Hanover County Schools, students, and staff. Before we get started, I ask that everyone please silence their cell phones. Our agenda tonight is a light one with our primary focus on the budget. As a courtesy to and respect for the time of fellow board members, the New Hanover County Schools staff, and the community at large, I plan to stick as closely as possible to our estimated times to keep discussion focused and on point, but we will get some work done. I ask that each of us do our part to contribute to a successful and non-stressful meeting by treating each other with dignity and respect throughout the meeting, no matter what your thoughts or your feelings are about an issue or even a particular group or person, so the board can remain focused on completing the governance work necessary for our student, staff, and schools to be successful. Thank you for that. All right, so, moving into board business, is there a motion to accept the agenda?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes. Would we please stand for our invocation, which will be given to us via a recorded message by Christian Rutherford, Director of Youth and Family Ministries at Harbor United Methodist Church?
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for this opportunity to open today's meeting in a prayer. My name is Christian Rutherford, and I am the youth pastor at Harbor United Methodist Church, as well as one of the pastors of Surf Church here in Wilmington. Let us pray. Jesus, we thank you so much for this day and this opportunity for us to gather together in this space. We ask that you would give us the wisdom and the discernment that we need to make critical decisions that are going to impact the lives of our children and our youth in this city. Keep our hearts open and our minds open to being receptive. Give us grace where we need to be given grace, and just allow this meeting to move with fluidity and at peace. Lord, we just love you. We thank you for everything that you are doing and the blessings that you have bestowed upon us. Amen.
Amen. Ms. Walker, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Next on the agenda is our closed session. Do I hear a motion to go into closed session pursuant to the items listed on our agenda?
Move closed session pursuant to the statutes.
Second.
Second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we are in closed session. Okay, we ready? Okay, welcome back. We're on record-breaking time. So, next on our agenda is the Board Chair's report. I really only have one thing to say to us tonight. I just wanted to remind us that our summer feeding program is well underway, and our Child Nutrition Department has posted on its websites the feeding sites and their locations. But I did pick up an easy way at the North Carolina School Boards Association Summer Leadership Conference, a quick way to determine the location closest to your home. You text the number 304-304, and in the message block type in "food," and then you will be prompted to type in your home address, and voila, the location closest to your home will pop up. So I just wanted folks to have that easy little tip. Next on our agenda is approval of the minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay. Now, what we all came for, the main attraction, old business budget. So Ashley.
And Chris.
And who, and Chris, and Dr. Barnes? Welcome and thank you in advance for all of your hard work in putting this information together for us.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Today we'll be presenting our recommended budget for this next fiscal year, 2022-23. We'll be sharing this information, we'll, I would like, if possible, if we could, hold questions to the end. I have provided at your seat a PowerPoint presentation, a copy of the presentation, which is numbered, which I hope is helpful for you, so we can refer back to that page number slide with questions at the end.
Thank you.
Yep. And so, on this first slide, you'll see, this is the actual slide that came from the county budget presentation. As you know, the county passed their budget earlier this month, and in that budget, as it relates to us, was an appropriation of $91 million, and that's based on a per pupil of $3,434. And so, the 91 is actually our funding and charter school funding. And so, 84 million represents the amount that New Hanover County Schools will receive, and 6.7 is going to charter schools. The county's student projections for New Hanover County Schools was 24,532. And to calculate the 84 million, which is our piece of that appropriation, you would take the 24,532 multiplied by the 3,434, and that's how you get the $84 million appropriation that would come to New Hanover County Schools. This is actually a decrease for us of 1%, which I think we covered in the last meeting, and that amounts to about, the difference in the current year students versus, or the current year projection for us in this budget compared to the current year is 337 students. You also see on this slide that the county will continue to fund our six pre-K classrooms at the 974,844. We will also be receiving an increase in our capital. We usually receive about 3.7 million, and we'll be receiving 4.7 million this year, and that extra million dollars is going towards the security and safety project, is Phase III of that project. The county will also be paying debt on New Hanover County Schools' behalf. So as you are aware, school systems in North Carolina cannot carry debt on their books, and so that debt is carried on our county books. And so, that is related to our construction projects and renovations, and so they'll be paying down that amount of debt that's coming up here for us. They have also provided additional funding for six more pre-K classrooms, so we'll be expanding that program this coming up year with that funding. And so, they're gonna fund 975,000 for those additional classrooms as a reoccurring cost. And then we're also gonna receive 580,726 that'll go towards one-time costs, which would be setting up the classrooms for the first time, and any renovations that need
Okay, we've got this, we've got this, and... This is separate from what we've been handed, or is there one?
Follow along on this.
That's the same, what's on the screen is the same that's on this back page.
It just doesn't look the same.
It's the one that was sent to, this was the one that was sent to us Thursday.
The one that's at your desk is the one she's talking from.
Okay, it doesn't look the same.
It is, it's just, that's in blue on a white background, this is in white on a black background. It is missing a board.
That's what I mean, it's, okay, that's on, just trying to clarify why things are looking different.
Okay, all right, thank you. Sorry, Ashley, go ahead.
Okay. And so I also wanted to, let's see, I wanted to share the next slide. So we had, we were just talking about our budget that has been given to us, or the budget approved by the county for next year. The numbers at the top of this screen represent our current year funding, so I didn't want that to be confusing. And so, at the top of the screen, you see the county appropriation for the current year, and I've excluded the charter schools, is 85,446. And if you take that number, and then if you compare it to the local positions that are paid for with that funding, the annual pay for those 651 positions is 29,823,668. And if you divide the annual pay by the county appropriation, you get the 34.92%. And so that's the percent of that county appropriation that we're currently spending on annual pay for those positions. So we wanted to compare that information that we received, that we gathered here, compare that to other school districts in the state, so in our region, and also the top 11 school districts in the state. So I sent a request out to those finance officers asking if they would provide for us the number of local positions they pay, and if they would also include low-wealth funding, if they receive low-wealth funding. I believe that it was important to take that into consideration as well because the funding to school districts that do not have the ability to generate revenue to support the school system at the state average level is why those counties receive low-wealth funding. And so I thought, for comparability purposes, we needed to look at that low wealth plus their local funding compared to counties that don't receive the low wealth. So we're comparing apples to apples. And so the listing here is the data provided by the finance officers that responded, so I didn't get 100% participation, but I have included the information for everyone that responded to that request.
I think as you look at this, you see a couple of school systems that are similar to us in size, but have different numbers of local staff. And one thing to point out, Cumberland is about twice our size, but they don't have twice our local funding. So how we got to the number of positions, if you look at this, we pulled this off of DPI's website. This will show you our total number of staff, and I'm sorry, it's small to see. Our total number of staff of 3,589. Locally, we fund 651 of those. That comprises 18% of our staff as a whole. So 18% of our staff as a whole comes from local funding. And then again, we wanted to share with you, again, here, this is the county PPE and of per pupil expenditure for our local budget, and we are there at ninth out of 116. You may say to yourself, there's only 100 counties. There are 15 locally city-wide school systems that comprise the rest, and then there is a restart state school system that is the 116th. Thank you.
Next, I wanted to continue sharing the revenue information. So some of this information you've heard before, but we have also received some updated revenue numbers that I wanted to share as well. And we will continue to get revised information on revenue as we get closer to the beginning of the year and as we start the new year. And so as you can see here, and we've talked about before, well, actually, before I get into the revenues, I wanted to make sure I was clear. So the budget recommendation that I'm sharing tonight is for a $15 minimum pay with a 1% step in between for years of experience. So that's, so that's the plan that I'm going through tonight to share with you. And so as we start with revenues, and we start with state here, as we've talked about before, the state is requiring, so a state mandate, of an increase of at least $15 an hour or 2.5% increase. So whichever is the higher is the raise that our employees would receive. The employer rate for retirement is also increasing, and that rate is going up to 24.19%, so it's a 5.7% increase. Health insurance is going up 5.4%, so that'll bring us to an annual payment on our employees' behalf of $7,397. And as we've talked about before, we know that our student enrollment numbers have not come back like we had hoped they would. So the state is planning for a reduction of our revenue based on our student projections of 3.2%. The state projections for us are at 25,777 students. As you know, we do our own internal student projections, and those projections came in this year at 25,447 students. And so knowing that that number was so much lower than the state number, when we did our school-based allocations, we used our internal numbers because we didn't want to have, we wanted to minimize any negative impact that we might incur later on if the state reduced our revenue, because after the 20th day, our students were lower than they had projected. So we were trying to be, I guess, aware of that and to be conservative with that allocation. Before I move on to the next slide, I also wanted to share, and I'm sure you see it here, but that difference between the state projection and our local projection was 330 students. So our federal projections, so last time we spoke, I didn't have any federal allotments, plenty of allotments from the state yet. I have started receiving those allotments in now. Most of those are consistent with current year. However, Title I is showing a reduction of 9%. Our local projections, we've talked about on the previous screen, but I'll still go through this because I've got a couple of extra things on this slide. We've talked about the increase, the additional six classrooms for pre-K coming from the county. We've talked about the charter schools will receive an increase, but we're seeing a $1.1 million decrease because of the student projections that the county had compared to the current year. We're also going to use $9 million of indirect cost revenue in this budget, along with a fund balance appropriation of 8 million. And that 8 million is consistent with the fund balance that was appropriated during this year's budget. I wanted to talk a little bit about indirect costs because we hadn't covered that in one of, any of the previous presentations. And so indirect cost is an allowable charge to federal programs to cover agency cost related to managing the programs. And so those allowable costs would be things like salary-related expenses of individuals working in accounting and human resources, purchasing functions, facilities, so they're not having to pay a rental fee to use our facilities, and then utility costs, all those things that we're paying for the programs, that that is why we're allowed to charge the federal programs this indirect cost rate. And the state is, provides the rate that we're allowed to charge to us. And previously, we were not gonna charge ESER funds indirect cost rate because we were only allowed to charge around 5%, and we thought, well, we'll just, you know, keep that in the ESER program, we won't charge them for that. We've decided now that we do want to charge indirect costs because the state has upped that percentage to 15.73%. So we will be able to charge the ESER program, and then we would be able to use that collection from the federal programs as revenue, which is what I shared on the previous screen. That's where the $9 million came from. I also wanted to provide an updated fund balance analysis for you. As you can see here, we're projecting, at the end of the fiscal year, we would have around $19 million of fund balance remaining. And that's equal to 6.3% of our current year operating budget, or 47 days of operations. As you saw on the previous slide, we're gonna use $8 million to balance the budget, which we have done in previous years as well. And at the end of this year, we should be around $11 million if we spend the entire 8 million of the fund balance appropriation. So that will give us, at the end of next year, about 28 days of operations, or 3.7% of our current year operating expenses. So based on these revenue projections, and we have the ability now to start looking at all of our funds, before now, we weren't able to consider federal, we hadn't received any of those federal allotments in yet. But based on what I'm seeing, I feel like now we can start coming up with an estimate of what we might need to provide to assist our federal programs if they're coming in lower than what we need them to be to cover our expenses, meaning our mandated state raises and benefits. And so through, through this plan, we will need to still reduce 136 positions over the next two years. These changes will be implemented through vacancies. We feel like that number is definitely doable, where we will have enough turnover to make that happen just through the vacancies. And so we'll be looking at central office staffing, that's what we had talked about before, and also our local school allocation formulas to determine where we might be able to make those reductions. I did want to also include that the 136 positions shown here includes the 82 positions in, that we've included in ESER. So we've talked about that before, but I just wanted to mention that again. And this slide is the same as we've seen before, so this is just where we were explaining. We identified during the budget process that we were, we had some additional, some increases that we needed to make in the budget to be able to cover rate increases in utilities and contracts, our software and our insurance going up as well. And so when we got together and we were looking at our non-salary items to try to find different areas where we could reduce current budgets to be able to use those funds, redirect those funds to cover these increases. And so as we went through and did that, this is the detail related to that slide, and you've seen this one before as well. So these were the items that we went over the last presentation where we felt like we really needed to cover these just to continue service. And we just felt like these things needed to happen. So when we were going through, these were the areas that we identified, current resources that we could redirect to cover those increases that we felt like we needed to be able to fund. And so as you can see, both these slides equal out to zero. They're both equaling the $905,347. Okay, so next, I wanted to go through what would be, what we would be able to continue to fund using our ESER funds with this plan. And so, for the most part, the plan will stay the same as what was approved in January. And so I wanted to go through this just to refresh the board's memory as to what that plan is looking like. So we will be able to continue to fund the 32 instructional coaches, the EC, three EC curriculum specialists, the one speech-language pathologist, two occupational therapists. And then we'll also be able to continue to purchase those additional curriculum items and the reoccurring licenses, so that's about 2.3 million. And we would be able to also provide professional development related to the purchase of that curriculum. So we would be able to provide that to our staff. Addressing learning loss, we'd be able to continue our summer schools. So we, and we would be able to, of course, fund this year's summer school, but also fund summer school again next year. We'd be able to keep our teacher assistant scholarship program of the $225,000, and we would also be able to continue those positions that you see there, the nine social workers, 10 guidance counselors, and one lead social worker. Continue addressing unique needs of special populations with the, I'm sorry, I didn't... Sorry about that. With nine social workers, 10 school counselors, and one lead social worker. We'd be able to continue our education technology piece of ESER, which provides for the additional one-to-one devices, the one media specialist, six instructional technology specialists, and seven area technical coordinators. There is a change here related to the plan from January. Originally, we had 12 positions here for the instructional technology specialist, and that's being reduced down to six. Improving preparedness and readiness, we were able to continue using our ESER funds to provide, through contract, six additional school nurses and one school nurse supervisor. Mental health services, we'll be able to continue to provide the two social-emotional learning coaches, two social-emotional learning interventionists, one social-emotional learning specialist, and the contracts to help with substance prevention. We have a specialist there along with that contract, and also a counselor related to that prevention. We would be able to fund additional HVAC assessment and repairs of this, around $2 million, as you see here. And we would also be able to continue to have these positions, the federal directors program and her assistant in the ESER program. Those two positions are prorated, and they're always prorated based on the federal programs they're serving. So once ESER goes away, then they would be prorated between whatever new federal programs that they're providing service for, they're administrating. And then a federal budget specialist and our Power School data dashboard. And then we would also have the stabilization reserve as well. So if revenue next year goes down again, and our, and we don't have a way to be able to support that revenue decrease, we would have the stabilization reserve as well to be able to pull from if we needed to. So the new initiatives that we've included in this budget plan are the $15 minimum pay that we discussed earlier, along with a 1% step increase for each year of service. And we, this plan also eliminates compression of our salary scales. And so I wanted to talk a little bit about the $15 minimum pay and the compression of the salary tables. And so the $15 minimum pay, for example, our employees that are grade 55 and they have no experience, they would be the group of employees that are making the... have no experience, they would be the group of employees that are making the $15 minimum pay. Employees on grade 57 currently, if they are, if they start working for us and they have no experience, they're making $14 an hour. If we haven't, and we would, if we have an employee that's currently working with us and they've been working with us for two years, well, actually, let's say, it's actually their third year, they would be making $14 an hour. So when we talk about compression, that's what we're talking about. So we have certain areas in our pay tables, and it's really the grades 15 and 57 where that happens. So with the new pay scale, the grade 57 with no experience would come in at $15.61 an hour. And that, on that same table, if you have three years of experience, so you've worked with, you've come in either bringing the experience or you've worked with us for three years, you would be at $15.92 an hour. So when we talk about compression, that's just an example of what we're trying to eliminate. And so we would be able to do that with this plan. We would also, in this plan, be able to provide a retention bonus to our full-time classified employees, and we would be able to use ESER funds to do that. And so we would provide, I'm sorry, a $1,000 bonus to them Some other expenses that we've talked about before, and we've also received some additional information since our last meeting, the landscaping contract that we're taking, that the county was providing those services before, and now we're taking that contract on for them. Originally, they were paying for that contract, $385,000, and that was the number that you saw in our previous presentation. Since then, we have bid out that contract, and so we're going to need to budget $550,000 for that contract, based on the bids that we've received. We've also received information from Legion Stadium that their annual maintenance fees are going up, $48,000. So we'll need to budget for that as well. So as we're going through, the salary and benefit increase estimates for all the funds, we've talked about 8.1 million. And that's including the Title I reduction. So we talked about the 9% Title I reduction, and that amounts to about that $723,000 you see on the screen. I've included that in the 8.1 million to try to lessen the impact to our schools, because that 9% is a big reduction for them. And so to give them a year to kind of plan for a big reduction like that, I would recommend using some of that indirect cost revenue that we're generating to be able to help offset that, so we can just minimize that negative impact to them. We've talked about before, our total capital budget's going to be $7,853,398. And the 4.9 million is coming from the county through their appropriation. And the other funding is coming, 2.7 million is coming from lottery fund, and the remaining is coming from a state facility grant and FEMA reimbursement. So that is our presentation for this budget plan. What I would like from the board, if I could get approval to move forward with the plan and really start building the budget, and be able to come back to you in July with a budget resolution based on this budget plan and also a detailed budget. And that's what I would like to bring back to you in July.
Okay. Are there any questions? So what I would like to suggest is that we start at one end and ask, let's say, two questions, and move on down, so everybody gets a chance to at least get two questions in, and then we can start back. Is that acceptable with everyone? Okay, Ms. Justice, your hand was up.
Well, I was just asking about the last slide, the capital repair. Where is the capital funding coming from, repairs and renovations, technology? You said a couple of different things. Could you go over that slide one more time?
Sure, yep. So 4.9 million is coming from the county appropriation for capital. And then the remaining funding is coming from lottery. And I was thinking I had that number. $2,758,958 is coming from lottery fund. And state facility grant and FEMA proceeds are covering $398,440.
So that's where the capital funding is coming?
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, did you have another one, Ms. Justice?
Well, I guess I'll work my way backwards. How much, I think it's on page 18, how much is in the stabilization reserve for ESER?
So I will be able to bring back a better number. Right now, we're closing out the year, and so a large part of that's going to be carryover from this year. And so I'll be able to bring that, a better number back to you at that time. Right now, my estimate is around $4 million.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. McManus, did you have anything?
Yes, ma'am. One question and maybe a comment. How many new positions to our system are included in this, in any shape, form, or fashion?
So all of the ESER positions, even though the people may not be new, we've created 82 positions with ESER funding.
Which means that they would go away in two years, possibly?
Right. So our plan, yes, would be to reevaluate our current staffing and to be able to absorb through vacancies. So people would not lose their job, but we would, through vacancies, be able to reduce positions.
So we're trying to spend the ESER funds?
Yes, sir.
Number two, thanks for the Title I move. I really appreciate the way you said it as well. Thank you. In the bonus for classified permanent only, no other?
That's what's in this plan, that it would be for our permanent, full-time classified staff.
And I know the answer by one way or another, I asked it. So we have to not reduce any positions other than through attrition. That's part of this budget.
There's 100, 36, but then there's 82. So you might have saw those 82. So then, because those 82 are built in with the ESER funds.
But we don't have to cut, pink slip anybody?
So they're still?
To balance the present budget that you were presenting.
So what slide is?
Yep, let me see.
So on slide 11, slide 11, maybe it's on this one.
It says adjustment, yeah, okay.
We anticipate to be able, through vacancies, to reduce positions. Does that answer your question?
Yes, ma'am. But if not, we'll have another. Thank you.
Ms. Walker?
Yep. So the vacancies are naturally what we'll have?
Yes, yep. So when we went through and evaluated our vacancies over the past couple of years, we feel comfortable that we would have that number of vacancies within the next two years.
And I guess that's, my next question is why, why do we even bring this number up to begin with 651? Because I think that they believe we have too many. And so I assume that means y'all believe we have too many.
No, we don't believe we have too many. We were just saying, out of the budget, that's what our local funds are paying for. We never said we had too many.
Well, they, they, to me, they thought we had too many. That's what they keep telling everyone, we have too many.
But they also told us that they present the money, they just have an opinion. The board gets to make the decision.
Guys, I didn't give it to them. And I think they think that we just have so much money and so many positions, and that is the thought behind not giving us what we asked for, for raises. That's what bothers me. Because I feel like they're focused on these numbers here. And I don't know where they got the idea that we fund too many locally funded positions. Because that's put us in a bind. Because, you know, I think, we, when we saw the salary study, and we saw them come to us saying that they couldn't make a living off of the salary they had, we made a decision to ask for that. And I believe that the concern is that they believe we just have so much money that we don't, we don't know what to do with it. It's like, we should just figure it all out. And that's what, obviously, you're trying to do, but it's going to be difficult.
So there was a term that the board used, and they called it transparency. So we're just saying how many positions we have and being transparent. So that's nothing new. If anyone asks for an open records request, we can show them how the budgets are funded, they're local, if they're split funded, we can share that. So we were saying, there are 600 positions out there. There's nothing that would surprise to anyone, that position, those are just out there, and we can afford them. That's not, that's not anything that's, it's not a bad thing. The only thing that was hindering us is when we were at position, and then we had the increase that we're trying to give, we couldn't do both. And so we were explaining, and I'm sorry, we were explaining to the board why we were having a hard time.
So, but I'm hearing Cordray say 35, 15, 35, 15. He is out there telling everyone that we fund too many locations. We do 35, which you've given us the number here in the stat. But I just don't know why he believes that's too many.
It's too many in order to get to the $17. We couldn't do that. We can't afford that. That's what I was saying.
We can't even afford 16.
Right. And so we gave you a budget that what we can't afford.
Did you have another question, Ms. Walker?
I mean, I have a ton, but we'll come back around. Can we do round two?
Yeah.
I wrote down like a bunch.
Okay. So I have a question. It's on page seven, where we're talking about federal projections. I was just interested in, did we expect the 9% reduction in Title I funds? And how come? Just because everybody's, are you saying?
Yeah, where'd that come from?
Everybody's felt tightening?
Well, part of it, so we get a lot of our funding through free and reduced.
Okay.
And so some of our schools were getting free and reduced without filling out the applications.
Okay.
And so when you don't fill out the applications, then you, that counts in. So it was our, I'm going to say the acronym wrong, CR, what are they?
CEP?
CEP, CEP schools. So when you're a CEP school, everyone is free. So you don't have to fill those. But then those schools were coming off. And so then it'll take, next year, we'll see it. It won't look this way next year if we get all the kids to, and parents, if, if, and that's the if, if they still qualify for free and reduce.
Okay, based on schedule. Okay. And then one last question, and I'm just making sure I heard it correctly. When you were talking about the bonuses, the retention bonus of $1,000, I thought I heard you say at the end of when you read that, annually. So did you mean annually for the next two years?
For the next two years.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Okay, I'm good. Ms. Adams?
That was my only question. That was, I just was going to ask that. So thank you for that clarification.
Mr. Wildebauer?
Well, you've already answered most of my Title I question, which I had to begin with. But I did have two other questions. Do we have a breakdown on page 11, it says review? So I guess that's something we'll do in the future. But do we know what percentages we do have at central office of the 651, and what percentages we do fund at, you know, at school level?
Is this the slide you're referring to? I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, and bottom there it says review.
Yep.
Central. Do we know those numbers?
So we are still in the process of reviewing the information. I didn't bring the data with me as far as the numbers in each of those areas. But we are planning to complete our review and then bring the results of that data gathering and a recommendation back to the board.
Okay. And I guess it'll be in July, is that correct?
I don't know if we'll have those identified in July, but we do hope to have those to you soon.
Okay. And my second question is back on page three. Just because I've been in, you know, I put eyes on different counties. We are probably more similar to Brunswick County than we are to Pender County, as far as, you know, as much money as we have. And we're basically within 40 people or 50 people. If you double Brunswick County's school, you would double their positions. They do have half as many, but they also have half as many kids. So they're very similar. Brunswick would be, they have a few less positions funded, but not many.
I think, I'm trying to, this slide?
Page three?
This is a slide, okay.
Yeah.
The 12,000.
Yeah, because if you just doubled the 12,000 to 24,000, you double it 300, say, to 600, which is, we're at 651.
Oh, I see.
We're pretty similar, I would say. Okay. That's not a question, that's more a statement, I guess.
Yes.
Mr. Bullier?
Yeah, I just, I do have one quick question with fund balance and a quick statement. 28 days. I just want to know, from your perspective and Dr. Faust's perspective, is that within the range of normal in the state of North Carolina? Is that toward the bottom end, toward the top end? Because, you know, I understand, you know, why we're doing that, and I think it's great. But, you know, obviously, when we're talking about Hurricane Ally, I get a little nervous. So is that normal? Can you comfort me?
Well, we were, the commissioners asked us to spin down 8 million, so that was more of a request for them. With, you know, of course, with hurricanes, natural disasters, it's great. That does make us a little nervous, and Ashley and I have talked about that. In the event that there is a natural disaster, that's, you go to your fund balance to repair while the insurance and things are working. So we, we're doing as we were told.
Okay, thank you. I would like to add, if this is okay. You know, lots of time when we talk about fund balance, that's exactly what we think about is hurricanes. But this is a great year to think about. If we hadn't had, if we didn't have ESER, we would have been sending people home, or we would, if we didn't have fund balance to you. So fund balance is also a source whenever your revenue decreases quickly and you haven't had time to adjust for that decrease, you can use that to balance you out for a year or two, and then gradually, like we're doing with the ESER, be able to make those adjustments to your budget. And so that's just another way we use fund balance, that I don't think everyone thinks about that. Because being able to gradually make reduction to the budget to lessen the immediate impact to schools, I think is a big deal, and is something that we should consider when we're thinking about our fund balance level.
Thank you. I did just have a brief comment, and that is that, you know, this board is a team. And we win as a team, and we lose as a team. And this budget was a loss. And it didn't have to be a loss. And for me, you know, not, it was, what you've done is a success. It was not a loss on you or our administrator and Dr. Faust. It was a loss on our board. And it's not about 60, 651 positions. It's about a failure to communicate. That's the loss. And we're still not communicating, because I have communicated. They're not worried about our number of positions. And I hope our press goes and does their homework, because they gave us an incredible increase last year, 14%. And when we talked to them, when I talked to them, they said, listen, we have a million other things. We have one issue here in New Hanover County Board of Education, and it's the Board of Education. It's our school system. They have 50. And so I just want to say that our failure, our collective failure, was a failure to communicate, nothing to do with anything else.
Hang on, hang on. Okay. So that was your two points. Ms. Justice, did you have anything else?
Oh, yeah.
You have two.
I know. It's really hard to pick which ones.
Then try.
I'm going to directly piggyback off of that. Huge failure to communicate. For example...
We're talking about questions for our presentation.
I am. I, your, your presentation is good, because you're doing what you have to do. Because we've gone down from $17 to $16 to $15. There is a failure to communicate. We haven't communicated to the county commissioners how dire our situation is. And part of the reason is because of that ridiculous 15, 35% figure that nobody really quite understands that was told them. And that's what they fed back to us last week or the week before last during their meeting as to why they weren't going to give us more than the 34, 34. So, yeah, there's a failure to communicate, but it's because of bad information. And they were, don't, they don't know exactly what it means. I don't. I'm getting an idea, sort of. But that really sunk us. That is a failure to communicate. Now, beyond that, I do have some questions.
You have one, because you just didn't, that was your first one?
Well, I do, I have a question, and then you can keep going around. Trying to clarify what you just said about the, let's see, state salaries. Okay, students, let me go to the students. Now, you had, according to the state salary, well, the state allotment for how many students we have, I guess that's the word for it. Can you go to that? Okay. They say that we have 35,000. Let me see where it is.
Is it this one?
No, it's page six, state projections.
Yeah, see, state projections, thank you.
Oh, state projections.
Because we've got two, we've got things flying around here, you know, trying to keep it straight. Okay. Not, I'm looking up, yeah, there you go, state projections, 25, 777 students, they said we're supposed to have next year, according to the state.
Right.
When the county met, I think it was two weeks ago now, that Monday, and they made the statements about the confused percentages. They also said that they were only gonna allot us 24,000 students or something. Do you know what I'm referring to? That's what their projections were? What was the county's projections?
The county projection.
Because that's not up there, but that's how they're funding us.
Yep.
Not according to the state, but according to their projections.
The county is funding 24,532.
Okay, and that's considerably less than ours. And that's what they're funding. During that, since then, I had actually asked during the last meeting, what did that mean, if our numbers had gone up when, after the kids start next year? And it's not 24, 532, whatever. And Dr. Faust told me at the time that they weren't gonna budge, that they're in their discussions, that's what they had said they were gonna fund us at. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, and they didn't fund us at what the state funded us last year.
That's what, well, I'm talking about this right now. I don't want, I don't-
I'm saying this year and last year.
Okay, I, I, I don't wanna get off, distracted. Okay, so last week, Mr. Cordray was on a Facebook Live in public, and he said that wasn't true. He said, he said, now, I don't know if any of this is true, I'm just repeating what I'm hearing from the people that are in charge. He said that after, if after the 20th day, if our projections, if our numbers went up to say above the 24, 32, he would, the county, he said the county would fund us according to the number that came in at the 20th day. So take that into consideration. He said it in public, and so that is important and helpful. So could you check on that, please?
Okay, Mr. McManus? Do you have, you don't have to say anything. If you're done, you're good.
No, I don't miss opportunity. I just have to keep asking the same question. Based on these revenue projections for all funding sources, reductions of 136 positions is needed over the next two years. These changes will be implemented through vacancies, but really is implemented through vacancies and RIF.
Are in, based on, do you want to speak to that?
We hadn't actually sat down to say, we would bring, we would bring back, no, we would bring back a plan to the board, to share with the board what that would look like. Because we don't know, we hadn't even sat down to say how that, what that-
But that would be, assuming we make a decision tonight, that's after we approve the budget. And I just don't feel like I can vote to RIF anyone when, when we just, I, I just, this is not the time to do that. I'm sorry.
Okay, Ms. Walker, did you have more questions? Or did you want to?
I was gonna say, so then you, we have to reduce the 15, and in order to have a zero, you have to do nothing.
Which means we take away 1% staff?
Right, you have to take, yes.
We take away all of our-
We go back to normal.
Then we would go back to the compression, we would have more compression on our salary tables.
Okay. Okay, Ms. Walker?
I, I guess so, we had a salary study done. Like I said, we had people come to us and tell us they could not afford to live on the salary. And so that's why we made the decision, and again, I just have to say, why haven't we made that a priority? And I know we're talking about commissioners and not paying, et cetera, but I mean, I'm looking at the one-to-one technology, that's $15 million. Like, I just, I don't, I know the commissioners asked about that at the meeting too, why we can't hold off on it for a year, why we can't wait. And I know there, there is a reasoning given that we can't, we can't do recurring things on ESER funding, but this is a recurring expense as well, if you consider they have to be replaced and they have to be serviced. So I, I don't know. I, I feel like there's ways that we can figure something out with this. I just, I don't know that it's essential that everybody has a device right now, when, when we're looking at a potential crisis for people leaving. And I know, I guess we want some people to go, because I guess we're supposed to have in vacancies, but, I mean, the things I hear, it worries me that we're, we're gonna, they're gonna just say, you guys don't appreciate the work we do, and we've been telling you this is what we need, and everybody in the county is getting a raise, except these people. And that, that, that is concerning, because morale's already low, and I, and I, and we have to think about that and how it's gonna affect the classroom. And I mean, and I don't have answers to everything. I obviously don't know everything that you know or everyone here knows, but I don't believe that they're, the classrooms are doing exceptionally well right now. I feel like what I hear is that they don't have enough help. And so I'm concerned about that, and I think that's a, a big enough concern where we have to ask the questions. Can we cut something else? And one-to-one, to me, looks like a huge, huge, you know, amount that we're spending that could be used towards paying staff.
So the one-to-one is coming out of ESER. So you can't put, you can't increase pay in ESER. So that's just a bonus that we have. So if you, let's say you pull out, you don't want to do the one-to-one, then you need to buy books for every student, which is another, because the book, the, the device is actually your textbook. That's what that is. So then you, you still have to, the district decided to use technological resource, and you've done that for some time. However, to make it, if we wanna talk about equity, then not everyone has the opportunity to have a computer at home. So then you may have, let's say if you have two children in the district, who's supposed to get the computer first? It's because most families, but so I'm just saying, how do you tell the parent, or how do you tell the individuals, you get a computer, but you don't get a computer? I'm not necessarily sure that would be equitable, but what I will say is that those funds are in ESER, and when it's time to do the rollout, not rollout, but to the five years, you don't replace every computer.
Then not every kid needs a computer. Don't do that. They, not every kid, no, because I know she has a-
Folks, listen, we're giving two-
Can I finish my, I mean, he's, he gets to talk and I get to talk. He answered me, I answer back. That's how it works, communication.
Do you want me to explain?
It's not your turn to read it.
There's a lot of people, kids that aren't even using the technology. I know that there are kids that do need it, absolutely, and I think those are the children that should be getting them. I just don't think every single child should have a brand-new computer. I think, I know my child, I gave her, updated her one every maybe two, three years, you know, so they had the latest. And some kids just take it home and don't even use it. I just, I just, I, I'm just concerned about what our priorities are for this, this year coming, because we can only look in, in, in the year. Next year might be completely different. Maybe our numbers will be back up. Maybe we'll get more funding from the government. I don't know that. It's just, I mean, I'm just trying to look at what our priority should be, and I just, I worry that that's not what our priority should be this year.
Okay, I have no more questions.
I would like to make a comment. First off, I would like to thank you, Ms. Sutton, and Dr. Faust for your patience and grace and your teams throughout this entire process. I know that we have not been an easy group to work with, and we appreciate all the work that has gone into this. And I do wanna respond to the conversation about the one-to-one, particularly the fact that we are in Hurricane Alley. We should have been one-to-one years ago, in my opinion. And the second part of this is that we are trying to have top-tier education for the future workforce. The future of workforce is technology. Our students need to be working on computers. They need to be utilizing tablets. Technology, if you look, we are becoming a fintech hub. We need students that have computer knowledge to be able to fill those positions. I don't want to lose any positions. I would love everyone to get a raise. I've said this over and over again, but our focus is preparing our children for the future. That future is in technology. So yes, it's an equity issue, but I look at it more as a future workforce development issue. I think technology is important. I am grateful that the district sees the value in it and is investing in it, and I just wanna say thank you for that.
Mr. Wiederborn, did you have anything else to add?
I just had one clarification question, and I would like to echo, thank you very much, because I know standing up there probably isn't the most fun thing to do in the world right now. But I do wanna thank you for all your, your time and effort put into this. Just wanna clarify, you said 136, 136 positions lost over the next two years. Not sure right at this point whether it's central office, school base, or a combination of the two. But then you did, at one point, say that there was an additional 82 positions that are currently in ESER funds. Where are those positions that would, so, we're not looking really at 136.
It's included in the 136.
It is included, okay, okay.
It is included, so I may have misspoke, but 82 is included in the 136.
I probably misinterpreted you, I'm sorry. So 136 total?
Right.
Okay. And so we don't know where those are. Okay, I think that's-
So in there, it's in the PowerPoint, those 82 ESER, ESER positions. So there are 32 that we purchase for interventionists, they're curriculum coaches. I have to get to the page.
Page 15?
Yeah, I'm trying to do it.
ESER 1 and 2 continued funding?
So social workers, emotional coaches, emotional interventionists, socially, emotional learning specialists, and then six school nurses.
But these positions we will keep, and she's saying that we're gonna still lose 136, so.
So if they're funded through ESER, then the goal, originally, when we put these in last year, it was that the school would be able to absorb them.
Right.
So, because we have to move them out of ESER at the end, and the individuals who are in those positions know that.
Right.
So we would have to find a position for them, or again, they know.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you.
Mr. Bullier, did you have a question?
No, just a, just a quick statement. 86% of our budget, or around 86%, is in salaries and benefits. When we're talking about what to cut, what to keep, I mean, you know, when I was in Afghanistan, we had Humvees that weren't op-armed. The technology that we're talking about, that Ms. Adams is referencing, that's the op-armed protection that our students need in a 21st century economy. That's what it is. I'd love for people to get more money, but that's the protection our students need. We need to make sure that we're giving them the tools that they need to succeed in the 21st century, so.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Justice, did you have?
Questions? Okay. 15 million, did you say? For the technology, number one. All right. Did anybody, first of all, you're right about the past. We should have had grants and things like this to get one-on-one a lot earlier. A lot of other schools, smaller districts can do that, and poorer districts. Did anybody at some point decide that maybe it'd be a good idea to ask who needed this one-on-one? For example, I know, and I'm not gonna name names, but there's quite a few students that have plenty of technology in their homes. They didn't even use these computers. They're $795 apiece. They've got multiple computers and laptops at their houses and iPads. They don't need those computers, and they're, you know, they're fine with carrying them around, leaving them in spots. It's the kids that really do. That is equity. They need them. And I agree, it is the future. But there's an awful lot, and I'll be honest, probably over half of our kids don't, if maybe top two-thirds. That's a lot of money that we're letting people sitting on their shelves. Did anybody think about asking if there was a need as opposed to everybody getting them?
The, I would like to call Ms. Brinson up to talk about the, what value the computers add as far as like software, things that we're using in the classroom that we may not have on home devices, et cetera.
That's not the question I asked.
So yes, before we did the one-to-one plan, we did reach out to the schools to ask the principals, you know, which device they would prefer. So we did reach out and ask them, you know, where do they need to be one-to-one? Schools wanted one-to-one K-12. Every school thought that every kid needed the device. A lot of it's for assessments, a lot of it then is for assignments. If students are bringing their own devices, they don't have the correct software necessarily on them, they're then connecting their device, which could be full of viruses and other things, to our network, which then could, could infect our network. So part of the reason why districts do one-to-one and don't have any more of the BYOD, I mean, that is going away across the country. So that way, we are being equitable. We're making sure every kid has the same device, has access to the same software, has access to the same resources that is needed. Because software that we purchase that has to be installed on the device, we are not allowed to install on people's personal devices. It's also helping the teacher, because in a classroom, I've got all these kids bringing their own devices. I have four or five different operating systems, versions of the operating systems, you know, power supply is lasting, not lasting. It, it just makes it harder for the teacher to teach, because they're having to address all the issues of the individual students and their device.
In the past, we had classroom sets, or mobile sets, that serve the same thing you're saying now. Did anybody do any surveys to find out what it was that the need was with the students? I mean, I, this is a heck of a lot of money at 800, I'll just use around, $800 apiece, when there could have been, I mean, this is one of the ways that bureaucracy works. It's hard to get answers and get things like this done. But this is a lot of money, and right now, we're losing people. People are more important to me, you know, running a school than technology. And so, you know, so it sounds like that wasn't really necessarily pushed too much, because people really do want a one-on-one device. It's the easiest way to deal with it, correct?
Correct.
But in the past, we have dealt with it in other ways, correct?
Over the years, assessments have gone more and more online. And even just this past year, as Dr. Faison was actually in her group visiting schools, she would come back to me multiple times, schools are telling us they need more computers, they need more computers, they need more computers. So we're hearing that on a regular basis.
Right, schools.
I, I'd say that yes, the one-to-one is definitely needed.
That's, okay, that's, you know, we, we can keep talking about this, but I'm just, I'm saying that that's an awful lot of money that I think that in the past has been handled in different ways and could have possibly been looked at, but it's not. It's, that's water under the bridge, except that 15 million's a heck of a lot of money, and we need staff, we need people. It's not you, that's just reality. Thank you very much, Ms. Brinson. I do have one other question, or concern. This local funding analysis. This was cobbled together, it looks pretty cherry-picking, and that's okay. For example, I'll just look down at Cumberland County. Somebody said that they're twice as much as us, and yet they only pay half as, would be, you know, half as much. Anyway, the point is Cumberland County gets federal funds because they're military. There's all kinds of things like this when you try to, this, this salary study is not a very, is this what that's called, anyway? It's not exactly something that I would use as an official document here. There's 116 districts. There's a large variety of districts on here. There's like 11 different schools, all kinds of stuff going on. It's like, it's not comparing apples to apples. So I don't even know, quite sure why it's on here, except for that incorrect figure that was used at the county commissioners thought was a fact about our school district. And yes, they were told, and I heard it in public, it was told to me, that we were hiring too many people, or had gotten into habit of it and needed to stop. That is on video. And I heard the county commissioners two weeks ago, almost quote, verbatim, that we were hiring too many people with our local money. It's, you can't go back in time. You can't change things. But my main concern, and you're right about riffing, the last thing I want is people to lay off. But for months now, we should have been fighting for more positions, instead of, in my opinion, saying, we got enough, we gotta figure out what we got, because we need more. This is the ninth wealthiest county in this state. And we deserve, our students deserve better under this time of crisis than to be stagnant, because we are stagnant now from last year. And I know we've lost students, but we don't know what's going on. That was the pandemic. We'll find out when a school's open and see how many shows up. And I sincerely hope that at least the county commissioner, when Mr. Cordray said that last week, at least we will get the money for the students over what their projections are.
Mr. McManus, did you have something else?
The deadline for our budget approval is the end of this month.
Mr. Shaw, did you check on that for me? Did you check on that, the date?
The general statute doesn't include a deadline for the board's adoption of the, of its budget.
Ashley, Ms., Dr. Faust said that you had the answer, and I just jumped right on you, sorry.
At our last, at our last board meeting, you approved a budget resolution that would allow us to continue spending at our current year budget level. And so as long as, since you approved that resolution, we don't have to have a budget in place by June 30th, because we have the resolution. So that resolution will hold, hold steady for us until we have a budget in place.
Can I just make a comment to that?
Can I just make a comment to that?
Let Ms. Walker, yeah, hang on.
So I was just curious, on page 16, they were talking about the contracts ending for, I guess these are the ESER, hold on, let me get to the page. For all the ESER positions that were hired, or all the positions that were hired were ESER funds. They're obviously needed. And so when their contracts end, how, and they have to go, how's that going to affect the schools? Do we know that? Do we, because I know, I've been told there are some schools that don't have an AP, but they have a social worker. I don't know if that's an ESER-funded one necessarily, but what happens when they go? I mean, have we thought about that?
And so that's why we're going to look at our central office staffing and our local school position formulas, or allotment formulas, to determine where we can make reductions in those areas. So yes, we have thought about that, and we've identified different areas we're going to start looking at. We just haven't had a chance to actually go through and start analyzing those formulas yet. But we will do that.
So you'll get them in, with our next meeting? Will it be July meeting, or will there be a special meeting for this? I'm, I'm sorry, that's not for you. For finding out more of the information with the questions we asked? Because I think that's important, I think, figuring out what we need to do for this budget.
Are you referring to when we're reviewing the central office and the local formulas? Is that the question?
Well, yeah, because I know I asked some questions last week on email that we haven't had a chance to get to, I guess, which was.
If you asked a question, I might have the answer. What was the question?
I'd have to pull it up on that email. You can come, I'll come, come back to you. That way I can have it ready.
Okay.
I'm all questioned out.
You made the comment that, yes, we did vote to do the resolution that if we have to utilize the last year's budget, we can for two months. However, everyone sitting up here knows that when the General Assembly pauses on the budget, we all get angry, right? We all say, "How do we function without a budget? How do we not know what we're going to get and where our money is going?" This board has had months to work on this. I do not, I, I'm literally jumping out of my skin with some of these comments. It is time to pass the budget. We have, we have experts in the room that have done hours upon hours upon hours of work, research, data collection. They have talked to the right people. They are the experts in their field. I trust their recommendations. I would like to make a motion to pass the budget as recommended.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion?
Since I was next in line, I'll go ahead and throw my head up.
Okay, okay, thank you.
I, I still think that we, and I agree with Ms. Adams 100%, we have had this in front of us for quite a while. But we have something new in front of us now with 136 positions. And I would like to know where those 136 positions are going to come from, instead of, well, that's, we're going to get that number to you eventually. And I understand that there's a lot of things, but we, I think that's a very good question we need to have answered. So I, I think that that is a concern I have. I'm going to leave it at that.
Nelson?
I don't think that's possible two years down the road. That's what we give our staff a direction to do. Hey, you guys figure it out, you're the staff. When we try to say, "This position, no, this position, yes," that's governance. And we are not, or that's management, we are not the managers. We are absolutely not the manager. I think, I completely agree with everything Ms. Adams said. This is bordering on absurdity. It's time to pass the budget. And by the way, you guys just voted last month to cut 250 positions and didn't ask a single question about where they were coming from. So I'm not going to listen to 136, let's wait another month. It's time to do our jobs.
Okay, Ms. Justice?
Well, Ms. Adams had her hand.
I'm going to, I'm going to come back around so we can keep it orderly. Do you have anything to add?
Since she had her hand up first, I don't think coming back around's very fair, because she had her hand up first.
I just want to say, our job by state statute is to pass a budget. The buck stops with us. Okay? And I appreciate all the expertise, I really do. This is nothing personal with anyone. But I take it very seriously that we do have to ask these questions. We're in what I believe to be a potential crisis with employees, and I don't think that is something small. So I think these discussions are very necessary. As to the point of getting information, working on it for months, I know I worked very hard for months to look at these numbers, very hard. So I don't want to hear how, you know, someone wants to jump out of their skin because someone hasn't been doing their work. I know for a fact, this is all I've been thinking about for a month and a half, at least, before I got a big stack of papers on my doorstep. It did not help me at all. So really, what I'm looking at here is, I'm trying to catch up, and I see new things, and I get new, new presentations. And so I need to be able to ask the questions freely, like I'm supposed to do as a board member, because we do have to pass the budget, and it, there are repercussions for that that are serious. So everyone just needs to calm down about, you know, saying people aren't doing their job, or not, not, you know, not looking at the information. I think we're working very hard, very, very hard. Done.
Ms. Justice?
Okay, the good news is we have the continuing budget passed right now, so we can work on this further. And yeah, it's been months, but it's been bad information flying around. I personally resent the back-room behavior and talks between people that's confused and made this worse than it has to be. We need to be upfront, we need to be working with the county commissioners, using the right data. Unfortunately, I guess that ship might have sailed, because they have passed their budget now. So what we need to do is here, figure out some way to help not, you know, you're worried about the 136 positions. I'm worried about the 136 positions that aren't going to show back up in September, or August. Because you know why? They took their jobs this summer, they're part-time, they're full-time. They're going to be making 20 bucks an hour, and they're going to think about the last two years, and they're going to go, "I'm not going back there." So, you know, even if we hire, we can hire, hire, hire. But these aren't the same people with the kind of experience and professionalism that we need in our classrooms and that they deserve. We've had talks about teachers. I've got, I know wonderful teachers that have left in the last six months. And they are going to private concerns and other, well, charter schools, not nonprofits and profits, and working in education in other areas. We're in competitive, we're in a competitive situation with other entities, with our teachers and our other staff. So we need to at least, with our classified staff, if nothing else, treat them to the point where they can survive. I was not happy with the 16%. I'm certainly not happy with $15. $17 is what we agreed on. And we should have been fighting with that, with the right numbers, with the county commissioners for months, as opposed to having, I'm not sure what's going on behind the scenes, but boy, they have a false impression of what we're trying to do here. We're trying to save our public schools and provide quality education for all the kids in the county. And that's not what we're doing. If we cut it, leave it at 15, and don't appreciate the bad information that's caused our county commissioners, who I really think do want to help our schools make decisions with, you know, improper information. So they say, "We can't go back." But we certainly need to keep looking at that, this, this, to see if we can at least, I mean, honestly, I know you're worried about the cuts, I'm worried about the cuts, and I'm worried about people leaving in droves. So there's got to be some kind of middle. And if we've got another couple of weeks to maybe have them look at some ways that we can get some extra money to at least get to the 16, please, we need to try it. I really think we need to go to the 17, though. We're still, and you know what? People over there laughing, thinking this is funny, this is not funny. That's heartbreaking that anybody would laugh at this situation. But I'm sitting up here watching people do it. And, you know, if you guys get a chance on camera to look at some people's behavior, please do.
So I would like to make a comment. I have, as I mentioned before, have been attending the North Carolina School Boards Association Summer Leadership Conference. And today, we had a very enlightening work session on oversight versus overstepping. And one of the slides, this is the one that I really feel like we need to talk about right now. When a school board or individual school board members oversteps, they, we are out of the school board's government, governance, and oversight authority. We're into the superintendent's district's management authority. I'm giving a comment. Excuse me, I am talking, I'm going to relate this back. I'm going to relate this back to the budget. That we tell the superintendent or staff how to do their jobs. And does the job, and we are trying to do the job of the superintendent and staff. So my thoughts on accepting this budget as presented is that Dr. Faust, Ashley Sutton, the cabinet members have given us a recommendation. The State School Boards Association recommended, when you're doing your strategic plan, that you don't approve anything lower than the goal statements, because it's the job of the district to do that. That's what we hired them for, that's what we pay them for. And the same with the budget. We should be looking at an overarching, you know, drone-level overview, and it's up to the superintendent and his staff to come up with what it takes to make it happen. It's not up for us to say, "We don't like the position that you've chosen," or "We don't like that." So that's what I wanted to just add, from a school board governance point of view, fresh off the table from, you know, 10 o'clock this morning. So on down the line, anybody else? More comments?
Well.
Okay. The, all right, Mr. McManus is the only one that hasn't had a second chance. You've already had one, Judy, it's Mr. McManus's turn.
Oversight, that's our job. Not proving everything.
Okay, all right, so the motion is to call the question. Ms. Bowie, will you please call the roll?
Please let him comment.
Oh, you just said you didn't want to.
If the vote is to not approve the budget tonight, and we continue, since we approved it, continue, type of situation does that put us in, honestly?
But before we leave, you have to give us direction, because this is with our recommendation. And so then.
Specific.
You have to give specific on how to balance this budget.
At the. Okay, so we are, the motion on the table is to pass this budget as presented to us this evening. Motion was made and was seconded. So Ms. Bowie, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Justice?
No.
Mr. McManus?
No.
Ms. Walker?
No.
Ms. Craybill?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Wildebor?
No.
And Mr. Boyer?
Yes.
Okay, so the motion does not pass, so now we need to have some sort of motion made on what we want them to do. So we'll open the floor for comments. Mr. Boyer?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I would recommend strongly that the people in dissent sit with Ms. Sutton and go through the budget and figure out exactly what they want, because the direction has been given a number of times, and we've said no to what they've said. And now the specifics need to be ironed out by those in dissent. So that'd be my recommendation.
Those in dissent would be a quorum, so that can't happen, it'll have to be an open session. Mr. Wildebor?
I would like to have some of the answers, some of the answers to some of the questions we've, we've raised.
Let's, let's go ahead and list the questions.
Well, for one, since we listed 136 positions, I know that some of the board members don't want to go to that level, but we've talked about it. So, you know, we're talking about central office people, we're talking about, you know, taking people out of classrooms, I, I'd like to know that. And I guess the other question I'd have is to look at, once again, I hate to sound like a broken record, but looking at ways, because I would love to see the, the classified staff at least get $16. That was our original thing, you know, and it was voted on, and I'm not going to hit the table and do that kind of thing, but, you know, it was, we talked about that as original, then we went to 17. Maybe we can find a compromise that we can actually help those people out, at least a little bit.
So is that what you're saying you want on the list? Because we're going to go back and, we're going to approve the list. So your list is, you want to know exactly what's happening with those 136 positions, and you want $16 an hour for classified staff?
I'd like to see if that's a possibility.
You want to see those figures?
See if that would be a possibility.
Okay, Ms. A, I am, I got it written down. Ms. Adams?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but without a budget and knowing the number you're working with, can you actually identify 136 positions, exactly what they are, without the numbers yet?
It makes it more difficult.
That's what I figured, okay. So I do not want to see that. And I just am sorry of just the absolute disgrace that this board is behaving in regards to the budget. I'm very sorry.
So you don't have anything to add to the list? Okay, Ms. Walker, do you have anything to add to the list?
I do, I would like to revisit the one-to-one technology plan and maybe look at putting it off for a year, or some kind of compromise in between in a serious way.
I don't know what that means, compromise in a serious way. We have to give them. No, I don't, I don't know what that means, I want to write it down.
Well, I'll write it down and I'll hand it to you, okay?
Can you do it, because I'm making this list because we're going to vote on it? Please.
I'll hand it to you, that way it's very, very clear what I'm talking about. And I would like to add that I don't appreciate personal comments being shot across the dais, that's not professional. If you've got an opinion, you can speak to us afterwards. We don't need to hear it on the dais.
Do you have anything more for Ms.?
Excuse me?
No, Ms. Walker, we're talking about our budget, no, not on that. Please, no, we're not talking about that. We're talking, we're talking about the budget.
Ms. Adams has got to finish her rude comment.
All right, finish your rude comment, go ahead, root it back.
Excuse me. And I'm just saying it's not necessary. See, the giggling is, that's immature. So basically, anything that is done on this dais should be done person to person, it should not be done on the dais.
Mr. McManus, do you have anything to add to the list?
Is there any way possible that you could, if this budget was approved as presented, the best you can do with what you have or don't have, how we would deal with those 136 positions? And then that, that's all, that's all we can ask.
So Hugh, is your question to go back and revisit, like what Mr. Wildebor already asked, what 136 positions?
Whatever possible, I know we can't hold you maybe absolute, but just so that people have a good idea of where we are and where we aren't. And, and I apologize, because I know that you have worked so hard. But I just, if it's possible, keep the budget, but if it's just possible, what, where that will come from.
So can I just address that really quickly? So we know that some of those are in ESER.
82, I think.
82.
So the 82, so we're technically, you're not talking about, you're talking 54 positions. So then you divide 54 by 2, because then we, so it would be one year and one year. What that could possibly be, we lose those through attrition, retirement, those types of positions, and then we have to look at numbers to make sure. So we know where the.
27 a year is what you're thinking would happen.
Yes, so what, what I'm, what we're saying is that we know that 82, because of ESER, they have to, and so what we share with the schools is that the goal is for them to, if you want, so with the secondary schools, let's say they have 32 instructional coaches, we added those, and some of those, at some of the other schools, they didn't have those. So those go back into the classroom if the school can afford it out of their school budget, because we created that through ESER. And then some of the middle school, the middle schools all got one, and then I think all the elementary schools or whatever, we gave them. That, so that's, we know that the schools should be able to absorb. And if they can't, those individuals will still just go back. They came out of the classroom. And, and then we put them, for those, the speech, language pathologist person, we have to have that position, because that's through federal. We look at our occupational therapist to decrease the load. So some of those will be put into federal. We just have to make sure that when we are, and when I say federal, that's a special ed, special ed. So those, some of those positions will go over into other funding sources.
Is that the same as CTE also would be?
No, so CTE is a totally different, yeah, they aren't in CTE positions up there. But, so we know 20, it's 27, technically it's 27 and 27.
Ms. Justice, did you have anything you wanted to add?
He's not done yet.
He's done. He said he only had one, and I wrote that down.
That is the good news. There will be the attrition, and there will be the moving of the ESER funds. Personally, I'd like to see those, I would have liked to have seen those coaches in the classroom last year when we were struggling. That was sad. That's, that's, I guess you could say, professional commentary about what people have been reporting to me from the schools. I do have a couple of things. One, I'm with Ms., she's writing questions right now, Ms. Walker. Yeah, look at the technology, we need to think out of the box. The kids that need the technology should, but there's an awful lot of kids that don't. And maybe we could put, just drop it, not drop it, postpone it for a year. So if that's one way to look at it. Here's another thing that's very important. We've got several different projections here. We've got one-year budget, two-year budget, three-year budget, all smashed together in all these different slides. Can we do a one-year budget?
This is a one-year budget.
Okay, well, then you're talking about down the line, too, okay. All right, this is a one, well, you know what I'm referring to, because we've gone through this how many times? And we keep, ultimately going back to the three years is actually what we have to look at with ESER funds. I guess that's the reason. I guess that's the reason. But yes, a one-year solid budget is a good thing that we need to focus on. And then, this is going to sound a little bit odd, but is there some way, is it possible that we can revisit the county commissioners that's done their budget, but get more funding in other areas between now and July? Part of the problem is the bad information they had. I would like this to be kept in public. No transactional here, just the need of the school. Can some... You know, is it possible for us to have some kind of joint meeting? And if we have to announce it, we can, like we had a while back, and talk to the county commissioners about getting more funding? Because this is huge. We're the ninth wealthiest county in the state. And despite what some people are complaining about, we do have the hospital funds. It's been confirmed by the county manager with a supermajority vote through several pots we can go through there. We need to talk to them about how crucial this is. And all of us do, not just three. Part of the problem is the lack of clear information, I think, that's been exchanged between these two bodies. So if there is that a possibility, that we can have a joint session with the county commissioners.
That's on the list.
Thank you.
Ms. Walker, can you give me your list? I'm going to run through them. And Dr. Faust, you wanted to add something?
I do. With the one-to-one tech plan, just to postpone, my question is, that's through ESSER funds? So what would you want us to do with purchase with ESSER? Because that's approved at the state level. So even though the board votes on it, you technically don't... We can't do anything until the state approves it. So we have to submit a new plan to the state in order for them to approve it.
So you need to know what the plan?
So my question would be, what would you do with the tech plan? Because you can't buy... You'd just be buying positions that would end.
Go ahead.
The... All right, yes, Ms. Walker?
So bonuses are allowed, but pay is not pay raise. I mean, I brought a letter from the Secretary of Education last year that talked about how to retain staff. I think they recognized on a federal level that there was a challenge ahead with staffing, and that is being brought out. We see that all over the country. And use of federal or for ESSER fundings to help retain staff, I think, was on that list.
Mm-hmm, it was.
So I would like clarification on that. I'll write this down.
So I can say that, yes, you can do bonuses, but you can't do pay raises. Because pay raise is a recurring. A bonus is a one-time. So in this, you'll see $1,000 for this year and next year. And so that's roughly what... How many individuals?
It's two years.
Maybe twelve. You know, I caught you off guard. But at any rate, so there are bonuses in here. So the question, I have to go back to, what would we put in the plan for the state? Because if we're bringing something, we have to take to the state, get approval to say that we can actually do it.
And how long would that take-ish? Couple months?
I don't know. Not this deep.
Okay.
If it's okay, I would like to add on to that. The previous three budgets that we've brought to the board did include using ESSER. And so how that works is we move positions into ESSER, and then that just creates more positions that you lose at the end of the ESSER funding. So that, the three previous budgets we've talked about, it did use that strategy that you're referring to. We just, instead of using the one-to-one devices, we were using, you know, we were cutting the summer school in the second year. We were cutting HVAC projects. So you're just changing the item in the ESSER plan, but you're going to get to the same result as far as moving more positions over to ESSER that would go away in two years.
Well, can I follow up with that question?
Yeah.
Because the one-to-one, to me, looks like a reoccurring expense.
It would be reoccurring if we choose to do so. So nothing would happen if we didn't replace those computers in five years. Of course, we would want to, and we definitely want to identify that funding. But it's not like a raise. So a raise, once you give that to a person, they're going to expect to have that raise. They're going to build their home budget around that. So we wouldn't want to give them a raise and not know that we could sustain that raise going forward. So that's what I would say the difference is.
Well, I guess the follow-up to that is like, if we're rolling out a one-to-one plan permanently, which is what I assume everybody believes up here, I feel like this is a... I mean, I'm not arguing what you're saying about the salaries. I appreciate that. But I mean, I feel like I don't see, as far as the reoccurring expense, much of a difference. Because I feel what happens in four or five years, we're trying to plan one year out and fix an issue now. And I think my argument is like, what happens when we don't have that money even then in four and five years? We won't be able to continue the one-to-one technology. So I know there's... I know that Mr. Rinson talked about how they all need to be replaced. But I mean, I know that computers do age out. We all know that. So I guess I'm just trying to figure out right questions to ask you. So I appreciate you, Ms. Rinson.
Madam Chair? Okay.
The, Ms. Justice had her hand up. Don't come back.
We still just need to know about...
I know. I'm going to let them do it, and then I'm making the list, and we're going to narrow it down. So we're not going to give you a list of 20 things.
As far as, and you said you've already done it, using creativity as far as making pay raises or positions. And you said that bonuses now... The letter from the Secretary of Education was pretty clear, I thought, that you didn't have to do bonuses necessarily. You could put that into salaries.
Well, that's what she just said. We can. But at the end of three years, we may have to take that money away.
Right, can we do this? We're looking for a budget for a year. And that's...
So that would be for one year. What... All we're saying is that you move all of those individuals into this year's budget for one year. ESSER two runs out next year. Then ESSER three runs out the following year.
Right.
So that's why it looks like it would say, it would seem like it's three-year budget, two-year budget. It's only one. So whatever you do with ESSER, you put them in, and literally, you're putting people in, and you know that they're... You're forcing them out. That's basically what you're saying. Because we can't sustain... We won't be able to sustain that money because we won't have a funding source.
Well, yes, we do. It's called the county. It's called New Hanover, and it's a state legislature. We up here need to be fighting for using the public resources for our schools. I see everybody saying, we've got to ask for this. We've got to ask for that. Well, why don't we ask for this and that that's going to help our schools? You know, same with the state legislature. One of the reasons we're in this shape is what's been going on the last 12 years. And that's one of the reasons local funds have had to be used so much for salaries, is because the states cut it back. Hopefully, that'll get better next year. In the meantime, we are a rich resource. We need to be starting to communicate. You know, and I'm really sorry that this situation's arisen where we have this disconnect, because we're all on this together. And so, you know, this year is one thing. And we can come up, and we really need at least that 16, 17 would be better. But beyond that, that's another year. And we need to be talking now with our local government officials, too, about that year. And let's be honest here, it's going to be an election year. And there's going to be different people up there. And if people want to serve the community, then they need to make it known that they support the schools. The schools should always be number one, as far as I'm concerned, of course, because that's where my focus is. But that's what makes the strength of a community, how they treat their children, what kind of education they have.
I'm sorry, one thing. What if we looked at this budget? And let's say, in September, all of those things happen. The General Assembly said they're going to do X. The county commissioners say that, hey, we'll match. We'll do that. And then you can go in and give a... You don't have to give a raise, like approve it now. You, at any given point, if you look at the revenues and see that there's enough, Ashley and I can prepare a budget that will increase. You can say who's going to get it. It doesn't just have to be here in the end of June. The board has the opportunity to say, okay, we're going to increase salaries in December. Or you're going to increase salaries in November. But that's when the... Because the new budget, the state budget will typically hit us somewhere around October-ish. And then we'll know where we are. And that could be a possibility. We are just saying, right now, we can't afford what everyone is wanting us to. We would love to. But all of these are projections that if the students have... Like, we don't know if we're going to... We may get 26,000 students. We don't know that. We won't know that until the 20th day of school. And then we can do it. However, what's happening right now is we are, and I'll tell you on the budget side, so we're closing the district, and we're opening the district. But we're opening, and so they're doing two jobs in payroll. And then she's having to create another budget that we don't even know if actually exists, because we don't really have anything. So we have to close. We have to open. And then we have to have a budget. So they're opening with the just last year's budget. But then we're going to have to change it again. So my question, or my position that I would say is, look at your budget. Look at our budget in October. And if we're able to give an increase, you can give an increase.
The only problem with that is when people leave in August, because then we haven't done our job now.
But we won't have the funds. All we're going to do is bring you back. I'll be honest with you. All we're going to do is, with ESSER, we'll put the same people back in there, and it'll run the number right back up. Because that's how you're going to get the budget. So if you want, what do we need, about $12 million? We move all of those, these things that we said that we lost, we're going to put them back in there. Because all we have to play with are ESSER dollars.
Well, we got them. Isn't that great? I'm serious.
But it's going to then... But the goal was not to... So we're down to 136 or 54 positions. It's going to take it back to 230 positions.
Well, try these other things that we're suggesting first.
So that's what we're saying. So all we can play with is ESSER dollars. ESSER dollars are going to end.
Let us meet with the county commissioners.
So, all right, so can I sort of recap where we are? I thought you said you were done.
Well...
Mr. McManus, I thought you said you didn't have anything.
I thought he has.
Okay, all right. So let me just recap where we are, because we are going to have to agree on what we want them to do. Dr. Faust threw in another alternative for us. So Mr. McManus and Mr. Wildebohr wanted what specific positions that we're going to eliminate. Do you still want that, given that we're really only talking about 27 possible positions per year? 27 out of our 4,000 employees? I mean, that's like, what percentage is that, like point 002?
I feel comfortable attrition would take care of the 27.
All right, so can I take that 136? I can take it off for Mr. McManus. Can I take it off for you, Mr. Wildebohr?
I would like to know whether it's going to be a central officer or whether it's going to be anything.
I agree with him.
But is it worth holding up the budget for?
If you ask me the question, I think it is.
Okay, all right, I'm just verifying to make sure, okay? And then we also have on the table that we want to revisit the $16 an hour. $16 per hour for classified staff. Did you want to have a step in that? Or you're just saying $16 an hour and not worry about the compression? That's your... This is your ad? With 1% step?
Now, that's the budget. I think we...
We've already done that, so you just...
Just bring it back, okay?
So that's what they want to see back, okay? Or that's what one person wants to see back.
Madam Chair, point of...
Hold on a second, please.
Point of clarification here. Mr. McManus, I think, and I could be putting words in your mouth, you won't vote for more cuts. So I don't think our staff should be jumping through hoops to see what one or two or three board members want. You will not vote for more cuts than 136. Am I understanding that correctly, sir?
Well, I'm...
We can't revisit...
Hang on, hang on.
The 27 is what you liked.
Right. Anytime we try to add more money... Anytime we try to add more money, we're going to increase cuts. It's not giving our... It's not giving our staff direction to say, try to find more money to increase pay and also reduce cuts.
What I'm trying to do here is make the list, and it's not going to be because Pete wants it. It's because we all wanted it. So I'm just trying to get a list together so that when we leave here, Dr. Faust and Ashley Sutton have some instruction, some guidance. So it looks like we still want to know what specific positions are eliminated. We still want to look at 16% plus 1% step for classified staff. We want to revisit the one-to-one implementing to see what we could do with $15 million to help retain staff. So I don't know what that means. The... What do you want them to do? Just take the $15 million and put it someplace else?
I know they brought to us bonuses. They're saying we can't do a raise. So I mean, just, I know there's... Whatever we can do to help, I mean...
All right, so you want to see how we can repurpose the $15 million in ESSER, okay? And then we have on the table that we want to go back to the county commissioners and ask for more money. So these are our one, two, three, four. So we all have to agree to all of those in order to give direction back. So...
We're not going to vote.
Yeah, we are. We have to give them some direction.
I've never heard of that. You asked for suggestions, and they were giving them to you.
We are going to not going to say Pete gets to pick one. Stephanie gets to pick one. Judy gets to pick one.
These are suggestions.
Right, and we're going to agree to the suggestions. And so I want at least consensus that we're all together, because that's a lot of work that we're asking them to do. So...
We already voted on that.
No, we didn't.
When we voted that we wanted a different budget. Now you're trying to go...
I'm not even sure how... What's going... Here we go. We're getting confused again. This happened last meeting. Let's just stick with what we made suggestions. That's what you ask, and let's give it to them and see what happens. Um, let's just stick with what we, we made suggestions, that's what you ask, and let's give it to them and see what happens.
Do we all agree on these suggestions? That is what, because it is not up to one board member to give suggestions. We all have, because that's not what boards do. That I can look up the policy and I can read it to you.
Rugs, there is no policy to this.
Does not give suggestions. We all together as a collective unit, give our superintendent, um, direction. So, we have four things on the table and so we need to decide. We want to ask him to go get more money from the county commissioners.
Oh my goodness, we already voted on this.
To ask him to revisit the one-to-one and reallocate 15 million dollars. We want to ask him for a 16 dollar an hour plus a 1% step for classified staff. And we want to know what specific positions are being cut. That is what we have on the table.
He asked us for suggestions. We gave him suggestions. I am, you know what? I have never worked on any position with any group of people that was so determined not to get things done, not to work together.
You block all of it, Judy. This has nothing to do with the board. We need to vote. Can we please vote on them one at a time?
Thank you, we're taking a break, please.
We already did. We've already had the fifth, five suggestions. So we're gonna take a five-minute potty break, please.
We're not going one-on-one.
Okay, um, we are back. And so to pick up where we left off, um, Mr. Bullier?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, you know, having listened to our superintendent and discussing the possibility of increasing after the general assembly does what they're gonna do, I would like to move that we adopt the budget as is with an understanding that we will come back and revisit when the general assembly makes their recommendations.
Second. So adopt the budget as presented, come back and revisit after the general assembly?
Yes.
Okay, adopt with revisit. Is there a second I heard, Ms. Adams? So, um, Nelson, Adams, is there any discussion?
Yeah, why are we voting again?
Ms. Walker, I mean, Ms. Justice?
Yeah, why are we, can we just move forward and try to do what?
There's a motion on the table. Do you have a comment about the motion?
I have, is, is this even, what he's asking is to revoke the vote we just did.
Yeah, he is.
So, can you do that?
With the caveat to revisit when we know what the general assembly funds are.
The general assembly funds could, which general assembly funds are you referring to?
The budget.
Which budget? They have one that's supposed to come out in July. What, are you talking about the year after next?
We're talking about the budget we're expecting, right?
What budget, there, that should be out in July or August? I mean, there's still, we don't know when it's gonna come out. That's separate from what we're talking about now.
So the button, the motion on the floor is to adopt the budget as presented and to revisit after the, the state budget is finalized.
Can we just move?
There's a first and a second now discussion. Mr. McManus?
Oh, gosh.
The 27, the, the new numbers presented are certainly doable without having to release anyone. Number two. I don't wanna say this. I am so absolutely tired of the bickering. Going in each other, that's my nice words. We are killing ourselves. How many times have I said that? We attack each other. The county commissioners are not going to give us more money. Realistic is idealistic. They have spoken. They would have to eat a lot to come back to us. Hopefully, if we can agree, we're all supporting the school, and the numbers are workable. If we agree, and we can start acting like we need to act, I'm part of the problem too, I realize that. Then hopefully, we will gain. And we're coming back and revisit anyhow. They've worked their selves to death. The time to revisit the budget, we still have the power to make changes if we so desire. So I'm gonna tell you, I'm gonna vote for the budget.
Okay, is there any more, are there any more comments about that?
This is sad.
Ms. Justice?
This is so sad. We're gonna lose a lot of people. And to not even talk to the county commissioners, when in all honesty, everybody up here knows it's what's been going on for months and months. It's been behind the scenes with two or three people, had nothing to do with the whole board. It would've been nice if we could've met with them that, besides that one time and actually been honest, sat down and talked about things. But that's been precluded by the hi, behind-the-scenes behavior. And that's heartbreaking. This is what people don't like about government. And I don't blame them. This isn't what's best for our employees. We've got a lot of employees we're gonna lose that we're, that we're letting down. And we're letting down, them down because of incompetence and people's personal agendas, and it's heartbreaking.
Ms. Walker?
I just wanna say, I mean, obviously, we are very invested in this process and we are responsible for this process in the end. And that puts a lot of weight on all of us to make these decisions. And so these questions are not meant to be derogatory to any staff because we all appreciate the hard work you do. But this is a very serious thing, and especially in a year after we've been through COVID and we know what the morale is like in this district. And, and in the end, we worry about the children in the classrooms. So when we're passionate up here, is nothing to do with any of what you guys are doing in the background, and I know you're working very hard. We just are very, this is a very hard decision for at least me. And I feel like we've got questions that I would like answers to. So it would be very hard for me without the question, without the questions to vote. Thank you.
Okay, any more comments, Ms. Wildebohr?
Let me throw my two cents in. Um, first off, I do wanna, again, say I think that you've done a great job putting stuff together and putting stuff together again and again and again. I think it's very important, you know, one thing that I do think is important is everyone that works for New Hanover County Schools. Obviously, the students are number one, um, the teachers are hugely important. But then again, I think of the TAs, you know, kids won't even get to school without having bus drivers. You know, so they're all extremely, extremely important. Um, I do like that we're at least giving them a bonus. I would like to have those answers, you know, I was talking to a couple of the folks on the leadership team about, I would like to have those answers, not specifically this person in this job or that, that kinda thing. But in, you know, X number, you know, so there's a compromise between central office and of those 27 people and, and the school level folks, you know, and I think that, uh, I've been assured that that, that can, that can happen even if we do pass the budget, so. But I just do wanna say, I think it's really important that we find some way in the future to be able to support those folks that don't make nearly as much money.
Okay, um, Ms. Billie, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Justice?
No.
Mr. McManus?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
No.
Ms. Craybill?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Wildebohr? And Mr. Bullier?
Yes.
Okay, so that passes five to two. So now we have a budget for you to work with and we look forward to seeing what you have for us in July.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, um, to all of the, the staff for their hard work on that. Okay, so, um, that took us two hours, so that wasn't too bad. The, um, next up on our, um, agenda is, oh wait, I just got off that, I'm sorry, is the consensus items. Do I hear a motion to approve the consensus items?
Move.
Mr. Wildebohr gets that one. Um, Ms. Walker, um, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, say no. Okay, that passes seven to zero. We got that one down. Um, next up on our agenda is, um, information, Math One Boot Camp. Oh, so I have Patrice Fason, you look so good. But we welcome you.
I'm bringing the Patrice Fason right now, I'm sure.
He called me and asked me what I was wearing, look.
That's it, we, we do have great coats on tonight. Good evening, I have some information that we don't have to vote on, but we have some exciting things that we get to share, uh, with you tonight. Uh, so thank you for giving me, uh, the floor for just a few minutes. I wanted to provide a brief overview to you for the summer Math One Boot Camp that New Hanover County Schools is providing through the Schools and Academics Division. Uh, so this year, New Hanover County Schools has received a grant called the Summer Bridge Academy Grant. Uh, this is also known as PRC 176. And very specifically, the grant allows us to provide enriching opportunities for students, both socially and academically. But, uh, one of the great things about this grant is that it provides us with some flexibility. Uh, it gives us the opportunity to determine the parameters of both the social and the academic focuses that we should have for our students. So, we prioritize three things that we know our students need. Uh, those three things are listed here for you, but briefly, uh, we have seen some early positive returns in our math results for 21, 22, and we want to continue some of that progress as we move into the 22, 23 school year. Um, second, we know that, uh, students need to be connected very quickly with, uh, support staff as the school begins. And then third, uh, research always shows that the more challenging opportunities you offer to students, the more likely they are to A, find success, and then B, pursue even more advanced curriculum. And in particular, we're talking about inviting students and encouraging students and piquing the interests of students so that they may in turn, uh, take more advanced math classes as they, uh, progress through their career in high school. And so knowing that these are our three areas of focus, what we decided to do is to build a math camp uh, that is going to accomplish four different things. Uh, first, as you'll see here on the slides, uh, we're gonna be providing, uh, onsite support so that students can, uh, find someone, a network, a safety net, a person on their campus that they can depend on in the summer, and that will carry them into the start of the school year at their high school. We'll talk a little bit more about who we're inviting in just a second. The second thing we want to do is provide some enriching lessons. These are project-based lessons, these are a couple of off-site opportunities. Uh, but these are things we want to do to build excitement, build, uh, some curiosity and get some anticipation for math, which was hard for me to do, uh, and I know that that's difficult now, but if we can put in some things that say, hey, look at these opportunities you have. If you take some of these higher-level, more advanced courses, or if we build even the foundation for some of our basic math courses, uh, this will entice our students to be more engaged once we hit the ground running in August. The second part of that is that we know that students are entering into their high school career with some areas that we need to reinforce. Foundational math skills that happen kindergarten through eight, through eight, aren't picked up by all. And we know we like that Swiss cheese model where there may be holes here and there as we go from one grade level to the next. But as you layer the different pieces of cheese together, hopefully all of those holes are covered. This is one way that we can do that. We're adding a next layer of cheese to the Swiss cheese model for math curriculum. Uh, so what we'll do with this is reinforce some of those foundational pieces that they're gonna be able to carry through. Math One, Math Two, and all the way through their high school career. And then finally, sigh acclimation. I remember my very first day as a high school student, uh, and getting lost, making my way down to the field house, thinking that I was going to my English class, uh, and a coach carried me down from there, and that's how I started track because he talked me into it from there to the classroom. And I think sigh acclimation is very important for our students. So this puts our ninth-grade students on campus two weeks ahead of the start of the school year and gives them 10 full days to learn the building, know where the councilor's offices are, know where those networking places can be, just finding where the cafeteria is, finding the quickest route to their classroom on the first day of school for first period, second period, third period, and so on throughout the day. This Summer Bridge Academy is built to help with those social aspects and the academic aspects as well. And so who are we inviting? Uh, so this slide has changed a little bit since we last spoke. Uh, this slide originally said that we were only going to invite those students that were proficient in math A, EOG scores. Uh, we have since expanded that, and we're gonna be offering this opportunity to every single student transitioning from middle school to high school. Uh, we do have the funding for that because PRC 176 is going to provide this camp as an opportunity for at least two years. Uh, so we're gonna be able to do this for every single one of our rising freshman students. The second thing here is that we are gonna offer this for the first two weeks of school. So students will be at this camp August 1st through August 12th. That's a Monday through Friday, 8:30 to 2:00 PM. Uh, we'll have a week after that where all of our teachers will return, and then we'll, we will roll right into the start of the school year. And then finally, as I said earlier, uh, our lessons will be built in a way that helps to bridge the gap between the areas of focus we know are needed for Math One, but also for real-world application. Uh, this is gonna help us not just with math classes, but other classes, uh, like CTE, textile and design. and design, all of those classes can be incorporated, because they're going to learn not just the real-world application, but the foundational pieces as well. So we're excited about the fact that we're going to do this on our high school campuses, the traditional four campuses are already in planning mode, and they're gonna be the host sites for these students. And of course, we're also gonna be providing some wraparound services as well. Site coordinators are already hired, and they are working hard to cold-call every single freshman student in New Hanover County Schools. They're calling every single one of them. We are already through New Hanover High School, or at least most of New Hanover High School, we're starting the ball rolling with all the rest of them as well. We are going to be using the traditional school teachers, and we prefer Math 1 teachers to begin this. We will go outside of that if we need to be able to hire more, but again, the funding allows us to hire a large number of teachers if we need to. And then the wraparound services include ESL support and school counselors, so that we can access some of those at-risk students very early, and help them know that we have lots of safety nets, that we are here to provide a great thing for them as they enter into their high school career. That's it. I am available for questions if you have them.
Jump in first. So we're only doing it at the four traditional high schools, but kids who would be going to any of our other high schools are eligible to go to the school closest to them, or wherever you sign them?
Yes, ma'am, so we're going to offer it right now at-site, and that is one of the disadvantages if you're going to attend one of the non-traditional high schools. The one piece that you don't get is that site acclimation, but we are going to offer it to them. We had to work through the logistics of child nutrition, of transportation, and frankly, just being able to hire enough of our math teachers and bring them in. They are being provided the exact same bonuses that we're offering for Summer Ignite that's ongoing currently. It is harder to get some people to come back in in August, but as of right now, we have 13 teachers that are on board to support the math program and the four site coordinators.
Nice. Anything, Mr. Willebore?
Well, first off, a statement, I think this is fantastic, I think this is a great step, bringing our kids in early and that kind of thing. Had a question, EC children, are they gonna, will there be supports, because you said ESL, but will we have any kind of support for them?
Yes, sir, we will have EC support, we will have EC-certified teachers that will be available as well.
And one other question, I hate to bring up this, but what about like, somebody's, I'm trying out for football, is there a conflict, are we gonna work through that somehow?
We will absolutely work around those conflicts. Extracurricular activities, just as important for helping students get ready for high school as anything else, I think that that's important, too.
Mr. Willebore, Mr. Willebore, Mr. McManus, sorry, sorry.
Much better looking over here.
Yeah, I was blinded down there from over there again.
Well, first, this just made my night, because this is what being a board member is all about. I'd say, B, academics must come first, so maybe the coaches need to understand that these kids, that this is a priority, and I'm sure they will all support and acknowledge that.
I have no doubt that they will all support and acknowledge that.
And hopefully, the news, we can get this in the papers, because this is what we really, really need, this is what it's all about, to get these kids lit up, whatever that means. So, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Walker, Ms. Justice?
Yeah, PRC 150, what is that, what, you said it was, I guess, a bill that supported it, what is it?
So PRC 176 is the grant that provided the funding for us to be able to do this, and it's specifically titled, it's from NCDPI, specifically titled, The Summer Bridge Academy. We just workshopped the title.
Does PRC stand for something? That's what you're asking?
Is that a separate grant from ESER?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, that's wonderful. And also, is this being offered to all freshmen? Is that what you said? You said they're literally cold-calling all the high schools, or cold-calling freshmen and asking them if they would like to participate?
Yes, ma'am.
And we're gonna be providing transportation and lunch with this, then?
Transportation will be provided, lunch will be provided, the whole camp will be provided, no cost to the students. We're looking into, so I don't wanna stake the claim on this, we're looking into a couple of different opportunities for off-site as well. That would include attending some special services and events at UNCW, getting them some access to, hey, this is what a college campus looks like.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's a good idea.
There are some other opportunities, but all of this will be at no cost to the students, and it doesn't affect anything with the budget that you guys have just.
And that's five days a week?
Ms. Walker?
I'm sorry?
Five days a week?
Yes, ma'am, five days a week, 8:30 to 2:00 PM.
Okay, thank you.
Who wrote the grant for this? Was this grant written?
I'm sorry?
Did you write the grant for this?
I did not write the grant for this, that would be a Jamie Malinak question, she is head of federal programs, and she provided the opportunity for us to take advantage.
Are you volunteering to be a grant writer?
Um, I'm still trying to write my own budget at my house, so.
Thank you, we appreciate the update, and thanks for getting that, and let Ms. Malinak know that we appreciate her efforts to bring this to us.
Thank you.
Okay. So next up on our agenda is the summer learning program, and this looks like we do have Patrice Fasing coming up, and Dawn Brinson.
Yes, and we just wanted to give you an overview of our summer learning program that we currently have going on. So currently, we have five different programs that are going on in our summer learning. If you've already heard about PRC 176, we also use that to do enrichment during our summer learning program. So I'm just gonna take a brief moment and just give you an overview of our current program. We serve 3,379 students. You can see that most of those students are elementary students. We invited approximately 7,000 students to our summer learning. Summer Ignite is one part of our summer learning, and that serves our kindergarten, fourth through 12th graders. They are invited based on their DIBELS, EOG, and EOC scores. And we also have high school, and they are allowed to do credit recovery. We do have some high school courses that we teach face-to-face. Math 1, Math 3, Biology, and English 2. Read to Achieve, I'm sure you're aware of it, it is our state mandated to close that gap for reading, and make sure our students are ready for reading in third grade, so we definitely offer our students that opportunity, and we really work on those foundation skills. Summer Bridge is a small portion of what we're doing with our Summer Ignite program, is we actually are enriching the students that are there. So Mr. Worthington talked about our math boot camp, and how we're taking that to another level, and while we have our students here, these are our elementary and middle school students, they get to be enriched and do some of these wonderful opportunities as well. We serve our newcomer students, we actually serve them separately. These are, if you keep in mind, our newcomers students are students who are new to our country, one to two years to our country. So we serve them in the morning, all of our students are served in the morning with a core instruction, and then in the afternoon, we do those enrichment courses. And I am, Ms. Brinson?
And then part of that enrichment program that they were discussed, we're doing a data code program at the three middle schools, so at Trask, Murray, and Williston, where we have basically 15 students per school. This is targeting girls of color, they're getting skills in basic computer skills, computer hardware, introduction to robotics, and then coding. They're also then, that opportunity also allows us to hire our high school students, who are CTE students, to actually lead the middle school students, they're called near-peer tutors, to lead them. So they're getting paid, they receive training, they're getting paid to actually lead the middle school students in this data code camp. And then the second program is the NHCS Can Code. That is a different PRC funding, that's 177, that we are using to target middle school students with coding. So the kids are gonna be designing coding for eBots and Sphero's, it's gonna be one week of intense coding experience in July, Monday through Friday. We actually are having it on Cape Fear Community College's campus. We have worked, partnered with the Chamber of Commerce and Live Oak Bank. We are actually going to have some programmers from Live Oak who are gonna come in, work with the students, kinda have organic conversations, talking about careers, and what they got started in coding, to kinda pique some interest in these kids, to kinda further their experience in coding. We are also with the Chamber, they have reached out and have gotten, they're gonna be bringing lunch in for the students, so they've reached out to other businesses, they'll be providing the students with lunch there onsite at Cape Fear. So we are very excited, you'll be getting an invitation to attend on Friday, the last day of the camp. The students will be sharing with their parents and with community members what they have spent their time doing. I don't wanna go into what they're doing, because I want it to be a surprise when you guys come, but they'll be sharing what they've done, and what the product is that they have created. But it's basically immersing the students in coding, and then also in careers around that.
Would you tell the board about how hard it was to recruit for this opportunity?
Yeah, so we did target some students, and did application that way. Those were the first ones that were able to come, and then we had some openings, so we opened it up to all middle school students, and in less than an hour, we went from 28 to 90. And some people, I got emails because they hit the threshold and they couldn't enroll. So there's definitely is the interest there. Our intent is to continue this year after year after year, and kinda grow it.
Yeah, 'cause I'd heard that it was harder to get into this than it was driver's ed. So people were very excited. So thank you for the foresight on bringing that to us. Does anybody else have any questions they'd like to ask? Ms. Walker?
If you remind us again what the dates are, because you may love to come.
It is the week of July, the 11th. I'll be giving that information, so that way you get it in your.
Oh, thank you so much.
All righty, oh, I'm sorry, yeah, Ms. Adams?
No question, just wanna say to Mr. Worthington and to both of you, these are fantastic, and such great opportunities for our students. Thank you for bringing these programs to us, and it's gonna be a great summer for our kids, and incredible opportunities for partnership as well, so thank you.
Mr. Willebore?
And I'd like to echo that, I think this is outstanding, you know, anything we can do to get our students in front of computers and other things, I think it's great. I did have a question, on slide, boy, I need glasses, number eight, was there a reason why, is it girls versus boys, and that kind of thing?
Yes. The company that we work with, the DAI, their purpose of their whole program is to increase underrepresented females' participation in STEM, so that is their goal, so that's what we were targeting. Last year, they did their program actually at Snipes Elementary School, which is how we found out about it, and then we wanted to continue it at some of our middle schools.
Fair enough, good.
So how were our, how did our interns, our New Hanover County Schools near peers, how did they, what was the application, the application process like, or the selection?
We worked with CTE to identify those students, they promoted the information out to the students, and had an application process. Hindsight being 2020, we will start this process earlier, and so that way, we, kids were, you know, we're focused on exams and stuff, we kinda needed, started it probably earlier, about a month or so earlier, to make sure then we got their interest. But we've got enough students to be able to work through this year.
Great, thank you so much. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. McManus?
You also do the coding. Aren't you doing the coding this summer?
Yes, yes, that's the, yes, that's the NHCS Can Code.
You want a suggestion to have on that? I've heard some of your parents say they wish they could get their kid in, to understand, trust me, next year, hopefully.
Next year, it'll be different, we'll advertise ahead of time, and we'll increase enrollment.
You are awesome.
Thank you.
Okay, so next up on our agenda is Legal Services Update, Mr. Shive?
Good evening, board members. I realize I'm the only thing between you and adjournments, so I will try to agree. So I'm here to give a report of the legal services that me and my firm have provided to the board and the school system as a whole over the past year. As you may be aware, your Board Policy 2610 provides that the board attorney will report to the board every June regarding legal services provided, this is that report. Obviously, I'm the one you see here at board meetings, but it's important for you all to know that it really is a team approach. Over the past year, there've been 13 different attorneys within my firm, all specializing in education law, who've performed at least 10 hours of work for the school system. In addition to those 13 attorneys, we've had nine Education Section paralegals who've done substantial work for the district as well. In the past year, our firm's attorneys and paralegals have worked on 58 separate files for a total of 1,569 hours of services, that includes paralegal time. The total amount billed to the school district is $310,000, that comes from $290,000 in fees and $20,000 in expenses. To give you an idea of how that's broken down, this is in order of most substantial share, the least substantial share of the hours billed. The largest single item to the school system in the past year was public records request. I'm optimistic that this, the number of hours devoted to this is gonna decrease, it has decreased in recent months since the board adopted the policy on special service charges. A lot of these, this was 412 hours over the past year. Most of those hours, or at least a lot of those hours, were from paralegals doing reviews and redactions to ensure that confidential information was not shared with public records requesters. Now that some of those very large requests are starting to dwindle off, I'm optimistic that this number will drop. The second largest share was from bond and DWI forfeitures, and this is actually a revenue generator for the school system, so the work that our attorneys do that specialize in this area helps to ensure that the school system receives all the monies that it should receive, according to the state constitution and general statute, whenever bonds are forfeited in criminal court, or vehicles are forfeited as a result of DWI seizures. Behind that, the largest chunk is general matters, which includes attending board meetings, gender review meetings, phone and email consultations with board members, board clerks, superintendent, et cetera, and legal updates. There are also student, parent, and EC matters, that includes all special education, student and parent grievances, responding to subpoenas, and advising school system staff on how to respond to subpoenas, FERPA issues, and student discipline disputes, and hearings and appeals. Contracts and MOUs were about 110 hours of the time, or 7% of the total. That involves reviewing proposed contracts from vendors and negotiating terms that are in the best interest of the school system, complying with board policy, and providing the board with all protections that we can negotiate in those contracts. Personnel matters amounted to about 100 hours. That consists of assisting, advising the HR department with all aspects of employee relations issues, investigations, advising on possible disciplinary actions, and being engaged with appeals and grievances when those occur, as well as advising administration on employee contract and benefit issues. Policy manual review has been ongoing in the past year, congratulations on getting that nearly wrapped up, but we've been involved with that as well, that was 52 hours of time this past year. And then finally, miscellaneous other, about 91 hours, consisting of construction matters, property acquisition, disposal issues, miscellaneous trainings, and general litigation and risk management. So I believe that adds up pretty close to 100% of the hours, and I'm happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Ms. Justice?
Yes, you said that with the litigation for the, I guess it's bond forfeitures, that it was actually a revenue generating group, or how much did it, of that revenue do you have available? Do you know how much it was?
I'm not sure of the exact number.
Like, we don't get the cars, do we? We just sell the cars? Yeah, we sell the parts.
We got a really nice car out there.
Good time to sell used cars.
Are we still getting traffic light money, too? Or is that not you?
Mayor says we owe it.
Eddie can probably speak, let's go ahead.
I'm just killing time, do you have the number, Ashley?
Pardon?
We are still getting that, but I can't answer your second question, which is gonna be, how much?
Pardon? No, I mean, oh, she was, okay, she wasn't answering.
I was just filling time while we were waiting for Ashley to see if she could find it. While she's looking, does anybody else have another question? Any questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shive, we appreciate you.
Thank you.
Mr. Sh, well, actually, I guess it's probably Ms. Sutton that I need to ask a question of.
Okay, go ahead, did you have the answer?
Yeah, no, it's just for the past fiscal year. So the district received 1.7 million in fines and forfeitures over the past year.
Well, that's nice, not for the poor people that lost them, but yeah, good for us. Can I ask another question?
You may, go ahead.
Okay, do you have any comparison with last year's, how much we spent on legal services?
I don't have the number for the last, for 20... I don't have the number for the last, for 20.
She looks like she might, she's cacking away there.
So if you don't have the at hand, we can, Dr. Faus can send it to us. Okay. Can we get it in the Thursday report or something? Or she can send it to Dr. Faus?
Yeah, as long as it gets sent, yeah, that's fine, I appreciate that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Shive, appreciate it. Okay, so, moving right along, the next item on our agenda is announcements. Pull that up, clicking. We don't have many in there. The July regular board meeting will be held Tuesday, July the 12th, beginning at 5:00 p.m., Board of Education Center here. The July Policy Committee meeting will be held on Tuesday, July 19th, beginning at 9:00 a.m. here at the Board of Education Center, so that is a switch for us. And then the interim board meeting will be held on July the 19th in the evening, and that interim board meeting will be a town hall. And the last item on our agenda is adjournment. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I adjourn.
Okay, so moved, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, meeting is adjourned, thank you all.